Would like to call to order the March 9, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome everyone. First up on our agenda is approval of the Work Session Agenda, which you have a copy of that before you, including changes on page three. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes on page three? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to discussion items. And first up, we're happy to have Paula Yost with our 2019 Child Protection and Fatality Team Report. Welcome.
Thank you Commissioner Morris. Thank you Commissioners. So I'm gonna start off with some of the same things that I tell you guys every year. I think this is the fifth or sixth year that I've been fortunate enough to be able to do this report for you. And so the first thing I'd like to say is that I'm going to cover content tonight that is not pleasant and that no one wants to hear about, but that doesn't mean it's not still very important to our community and to our community's future, which is why I'm going to do it anyway. Also, the things that I'm going to say tonight are not solely my personal opinion. This presentation has been vetted by your county Child Protection and Fatality Team, which consists of about thirty active professionals that include DHS, DJJ, the DA's Office, the Cabarrus Partnership for Children, the school systems, the police, EMS, and anyone else who feels welcome and desirous of assisting the children in this community. Finally, there are parts of my presentation where you might be like, Paula, what are you doing? Where are we going with this? I promise if you stay with me, I'm gonna get you all to a place where everything makes sense. So just bear with me if you start to wonder about it. So the first slide, and I just press the beautiful. Okay. So I'd just like to reiterate that a Child Protection and Fatality Team is statutorily mandated by the state of North Carolina. Every county has to have one. In Cabarrus County, we are a combined team where we do both protection and fatality, which means that we review every autopsy of any child that has died in the county in the previous calendar year. So during 2019, we reviewed all of the 2018 fatalities in the county. This is your 2019 report, so I'm gonna be covering the 2018 fatalities that occurred within the community. We look at global ways to protect children in the community, and then we do all that we can to have meetings that support whatever is in their best interest. These are our 2018 child fatality deaths. The total number of deaths for 2018 for children zero to eighteen or zero to seventeen before their eighteenth birthday was twenty-four. That's pretty average. The maximum that we've had since I've been doing this was twenty-five. The lowest number we've ever had was eighteen. And for a population the size of Cabarrus County, twenty-four fatalities among children is a pretty good number. It can be worse in other areas, so twenty-four is pretty solid. I mean, of course, it's never good to have child death, ever, but we want to have low or the lowest numbers we can possibly get. We don't want large numbers of child fatality. The most common causes of fatality among our children were illnesses. Those are things that there is absolutely nothing that could have prevented those illnesses. The children were born with some sort of birth defect that impacted them, that the doctors did all that they could, but there just was no positive result. The next most common was prematurity. You are classified for this if you are born and you are able to breathe or have a heartbeat for a few minutes after you exit the womb, but you are not able to sustain life. So usually, this category is our babies that are born at twenty to twenty-one weeks due to some sort of abruption or what have you. Still fairly low number. We have had four accidental deaths, which were either due to co-sleeping, unsafe sleep, or car accidents. My team actually prefers that I say unsafe sleeps, so forgive me. I pretend I didn't say co-sleeping. It is unsafe sleep. We have had one abuse case that did result in a fatality that was prosecuted by our district attorney's office. And we have two other fatalities which were also related to abuse that are currently pending DA's review, so we have not reviewed those cases in yellow yet because of that. I think it's important that we note that in almost all of the abuse cases that we are seeing, they are somehow opioid-related. And what I mean by that is the parent is either ingesting an opioid and then endangering their child as a result of their substance use, or the parent is somehow negligently managing their possession of the opioids such that the child has access to it when they should not. So, yes.
Quick question.
Absolutely.
Mecklenburg.
Yes. The reason that that says Mecklenburg, we have a Cabarrus County child who died within the confines of Mecklenburg County. So if you die in Mecklenburg County even though you live here, the Mecklenburg County DA's Office has to review that fatality. And until they finish that process, we do not review the death. You're welcome. Thank you. We have also conducted two intensive state fatality reviews within the last six months. So these are a special category, and they are happening more and more now, and that is just because that is what DHHS in Raleigh is doing. Basically, what triggers an intensive state fatality review is when a child has had a DSS involvement within one calendar year of their death. So that would mean that there was a report called in, or they were in in-home services within one year. That doesn't mean that DHS did anything wrong. It just means that the state wants to investigate in gross detail every aspect of this case. These reviews usually take two full business days. We assemble a team that usually includes five statutorily mandated individuals. It's usually me. I've been the chair in both reviews. Someone from law enforcement or the DA's Office, a medical professional, a community representative who has usually been someone for the Partnership for Children. If they're school age, we have the school participate as well. The findings of those reviews are all publicly available. No egregious error was found on any Cabarrus County employee's part in any of those cases. One of those findings is not yet publicly available. The results are pending, but the first one is. I could make that available to the Commissioners. But probably the most important thing that I learned from doing this process that I think is worthy of noting is that babies who test positive for marijuana at birth have a higher statistical rate of being subject to one of these reviews, and that was the case in both of them. In both reviews, we had a child that tested positive for marijuana at birth. And it seems like there's this trend now where we're trying to discredit how bad it is when you test positive for marijuana at birth, because marijuana is being legalized in many states. But I think what I'll just say to that is that you really shouldn't be smoking anything while you are pregnant. It is dangerous to consume marijuana when you are pregnant, and it has unknown side effects on the baby. So what we found as a result of that is, in both cases that we reviewed, it was a positive baby for marijuana at birth. These are our DHS numbers. So there were three thousand and ninety-nine Child Protection Services reports called in, twenty-four hundred and forty-seven were accepted. We have sixty-two people in, sixty-two children in in-home services or cases open for in-home services. What that means, a lot of people don't understand what in-home services is. That means most of those families are just suffering from extreme poverty. So their parents are not abusing or neglecting the children such that the children need to be taken from their parents and put into foster care, but the parents are needing some form of an assistance, whether that is food stamp assistance, housing assistance, mental health services. But that is that population. So there's not abuse or neglect, but they're not, so they're not eligible for foster care, but they still need help. The county has one hundred and fifteen children on average in foster care per month. We've had ninety-one petitions filed for custody, and forty-six foster children moved to permanence. And again, these numbers look appalling, but when you look at national statistics for a county the size of ours, these are actually pretty decent numbers, even though they look really bad. They're not horrible numbers based on our community size. I'm going to talk for a few minutes about some of the specified areas of our county's Community Needs Assessment as they relate to children. So the first one I'd like to draw your attention to is the top right-hand corner that's in the orange block up there. This is an updated 2019 Cabarrus County Homelessness Indicators Grid. And basically, what that says is that during 2019, between Cabarrus County and Kannapolis City Schools, five hundred and seventy-five students were identified as homeless. Kannapolis City Schools identified one hundred and forty-eight homeless students, and Cabarrus County Schools identified, I believe that says four hundred and twenty-seven. And so this is a problem that is continuing to grow, and is probably going to unfortunately continue to grow as population increases and cost of living increases. The Salvation Army is working really hard to get their new Center of Hope to open. They need seven, or they, it's a seven million dollar facility that they've been approved to build off Ashland Drive. They've raised a little over four million dollars, and they are hoping to break ground this summer. They just need to get some building inspection things in place, but I was at a meeting about that today, and I do think that plans for that are going really well. We have absolutely no emergency shelter for children in the county right now, but the Salvation Army has one room. So if they can get that open and operational, that will definitely give us a facility where some of these children and families can go. A lot of people seem to think that homelessness is only men, that it's, you know, panhandlers. That's completely not true. Obviously, from these numbers, we have high numbers of homeless children and families in Cabarrus County who all need shelter.
Excuse me, before you go further, for the benefit of the viewing audience, and of course those that's here, would you give us the definition of homelessness when it comes to the children?
I would.
Because, you know, that's an astounding number, and we talk about it, but we need you to tell the public what that means.
Basically, what it means homelessness is really children that have been displaced from their residence. So, you know, when you enroll in public school, you have to have a residence. There has to be somewhere that you live. That's how we determine what district you're in and how your public education gets funded. These are children who may be couch surfing. Couch surfing is when they're going from relative to relative's house, but they don't really have an address. It could be that they're living in extended stay hotels down off, like the Copperfield Boulevard area. It could be that they are living in vans or tents. Most of what we're seeing in the county, I believe, is the couch surfing where they're going from family to family. But I mean, you also have to consider the great burden on that. I mean, as awesome as my husband and my kids and I are, can you imagine, you know, if we just moved in with one of our relatives and all of a sudden, you know, five more people are sitting in your house when you're not planning for them to be there? So it's a lot of couch surfing.
And can we take this opportunity to point out that the school system, if one of those children, if their last known address is somewhere in Cabarrus, but they're living in Mecklenburg County or living somewhere else, they're required to go pick them up and bring them back to Cabarrus County to have a seat for them in that school. And I don't think a lot of people know that, and I don't think anybody has any idea how expensive that is.
That is correct. That is part of the McKinney-Vento Act. And so if you become homeless during the school year, as one of our goals is to keep students in their same school, so that you're not moving from, you know, Brown to Central to Westmeck all throughout the school year. One of the hopes is that we can use the McKinney-Vento Act to stabilize children in a permanent environment. So next up is obesity. This is another one of our big hard hitters on the Community Needs Assessment. The Cabarrus Help Alliance actually provided me with this statistic, that nearly one in three children in the community is currently classified as obese or overweight. To be clear and blunt about that, that means that thirty-two percent is the number of children identified as being overweight or obese in Cabarrus County. Next, I want to talk about behavioral health. These also were statistics that I got from Cabarrus Help Alliance. These are our numbers for the Emergency Department at Atrium Health Cabarrus. And what I really want to draw your attention to is the bottom numbers, the green numbers. Because the numbers that are in the bottom in green, those are children ages zero to seventeen. So as you can see, during 2018, we had three hundred and twenty-one children going through the ED during a calendar year. Our team has worked with Atrium Cabarrus to get some data on what do we know about those children? Are they from somewhere else? Are they revolving door kids? And the fact is that that doesn't, neither of those situations seem to be the case. Those seem to be just straight-up children who are a danger to themselves or others. That is almost one child per day. So I'm gonna shift just a little bit from talking about all the stuff that I've covered so far, because I want to talk a little bit about trauma and ACE scores. I'm not going to assume that you as Commissioners know what ACE scores are, and I'm not going to assume that anyone viewing it at home knows what it is either. So I'm gonna take you through an ACE score test, and then I'm going to explain to you why an ACE score is important. So ACE scores are something that we're tracking all across the county, or we should be tracking all across the county. And it kind of begins with prior to your eighteenth birthday, and I don't expect any of you to tell me your scores. I don't want to know your scores, but you can calculate this in your mind, and if you're watching this at home, I would also encourage you to calculate a score as we walk through this. So prior to your eighteenth birthday, did a parent or other adult in the household often or very often swear at you, insult you, put you down, humiliate you, or act in a way that made you afraid you would be physically hurt? If yes, that is a point. Did a parent or other adult in the household often or very often push, grab, slap, or throw something at you, or ever hit you so hard that you had marks or were injured? If yes, that is a point. Did a person or adult at least five years older than you ever touch or fondle you, or have you ever tou, or have, or have you touched their body in a sexual way, or attempt to have intercourse of any kind with you? If yes, that is a point. Did you often or very often feel that no one in your family loved you or thought you were important or special, or your family didn't look out for each other, feel close to each other, or support each other? If yes, that is a point. Did you often or very often feel that you did not have enough to eat, you had to wear dirty clothes, and you had no one to protect you? Were your parents too drunk or too high to take care of you or to take you to the doctor if you needed it? If yes, that is a point. Were your parents ever separated or divorced? If yes, that is a point. Was your mother or stepmother often or very often pushed, grabbed, slapped, or had something thrown at her? Or sometimes often or very often kicked, bitten, hit with a fist, or hit with something hard, or ever repeatedly hit over at least a few minutes or threatened with a gun or knife? If yes, that is a point. Did you ever live with anyone who was a problem drinker or alcoholic or who used street drugs? If yes, that is a point. Was a household member or mentally, was a household member depressed or mentally ill, or did a household member ever attempt suicide or complete suicide? That would be a point. And did a household member ever go to prison? If yes, that is a point. Not added into the ACE score, but things that I also think are important and could also result in ACE score points are systematic exposure to racism as a child, or being terminally or chronically ill as a parent, a child, or a sibling. So you yourself are terminally or chronically ill, or you have a parent that is. So what this stuff means is that if you have an ACE score of four or greater, lots of people have ACE scores that are between zero and three, those people are usually able to be just fine. But if you have an ACE score of four or higher, you are identified into the population that we get concerned about. And what I mean by that is that that population has been intensely studied. There are about seventy publications, academic journal publications, that have studied this population. And what they show is that childhood trauma is very common, even in employed, middle-class, college-educated people with great health insurance. There is a direct link between childhood trauma and adult onset of chronic disease, as well as depression, suicide, being violent, and being a victim of violence. The more types of trauma you've endured increase your risk of health, social, and emotional problems. And people usually experience more than one type of trauma, so rarely are you gonna have a house where it's just sex abuse. You're going to have additional types of trauma on top of sex abuse. Would any of you like to guess what kind of a study birthed ACE research?
I was surprised to find out that it was an obesity study.
That is correct, Commissioner Morris. So in 1985, Kaiser Permanente paid a physician named Dr. Vincent Foletti to do an obesity study. And basically, what Dr. Foletti did was, his study was going great. He enrolled three hundred people in the obesity study. They were doing amazing with the study, but what he would find is that as soon as the people really began to see progress and lose weight, they were dropping out of the study like hotcakes. And he couldn't figure out what was going on, because why would you lose a hundred pounds and then you would drop out of the obesity study and gain every bit of your weight back? And so he started having people who had dropped out come back, and he was asking them a series of interview questions. And he sort of discovered ACE scores by accident, because he asked one of the women who had dropped out, how old were you when you were, or how much did you weigh when you were first sexually active? And the woman said forty pounds. It was my father. I am an incest survivor. And he then polled all of the two hundred and eighty-six people in his study, and what he determined is that almost all of them were adult survivors of childhood sexual abuse. So what does this mean? Right now, national statistics show that one in four females are subject to child sexual abuse, and one in nine males are victims. And we actually think that the number for males is low, because there is such a stigmatization that goes along with being a male adult survivor of sexual abuse. But what it means to us as a community is that every single issue we are currently facing in our Community Needs Assessment, obesity, homelessness, mental health, and substance use issues, are not the problem. They're a symptom of the problem. The problem that we have is trauma, and our world's uninformed response to how to manage trauma. Trauma is also leading to personality disorders, which we as a society are completely ill-equipped to manage. So when we talk about human psychology and human behavior, especially as it relates to trauma, you have to look at it through the lens of a lifespan. You can't look at it in the terms of an isolated incident. And you also need to look at it in terms of generational impact. You need to do that, because unprocessed trauma gets stored in your body. You know, there used to be this myth that something bad happened to you, and you just forget about it and go on with your life. But what studies, what every academic scientific study has shown is that trauma is not just in your head. It leaves a real physical imprint on your body, and it actually changes your brain. Untreated trauma can have huge impacts on future health. So again, this is kind of like our beehive of what trauma can cause. It's everything that we're already seeing in our Community Needs Assessment, including major health concerns like heart attacks, stroke, diabetes, truancy from school, human trafficking, domestic violence, child abuse, and neglect. Every single one of those things is directly related to childhood trauma. Trauma also causes our memory processing system to malfunction, so that trauma doesn't get stored correctly. Our brains basically remember traumatic events like shrapnel. So it looks like, scientists call it, or psychologists call it dissociation. So they remember things like shrapnel, because the language of survival is sensation. Unfortunately, what this means is that these people look like they're lying. They're not lying. They can't often remember traumatic events, and even if they can, the brain damage from the PTSD has made it so they cannot tell a story from A to B to C to D. They wind up being all over the place, and it looks like they're lying. They're not lying. They're just suffering from brain damage. And we have completely unrealistic expectations of what we think those people should be able to do. These fragments manifest themselves as post-traumatic stress and increase our risk of becoming seriously ill. It also physically changes our brain. So children who grow up like this frequently develop personality disorders, because the house is so dysfunctional that they have no frame of reference for what is normal. Very young children do not have words to apply to the trauma that they are experiencing, so they wind up analyzing them with an immature, trauma-exposed brain, which creates false narratives, which are self-critical and destructing, destructive, shaming and guilting, inaccurate and untrue. These children also experience a deficit in nourishing affection and attention from an apparent, presumes it is their fault, and that they must be unworthy of these vital supplies. They wind up interpreting love as a painful yearning and longing which is never returned, which is why you see people who stay in violent, abusive, or human trafficking relationships, because that is literally how they were taught to experience love as minors. These painful sensations associated with loving an unresponsive apparent influence our existence. It sets us up for poor relationship choices, prepares us for lives driven by wishful thinking and intense cravings for things we cannot have, and a personality disorder is born. The sensation of not being good enough also spawns and perpetuates addictions and compulsions such as opioids or obesity, food addiction. So back to lifespan development, I want to give you a little bit better picture of this. So let's say we have a generation of grandparents that have domestic violence and a host of other ACE score-producing elements. Their child, that's their parent, winds up developing a personality disorder as a result of growing up in this chaos. The grandchildren will either also likely develop a personality disorder, which would be a worst-case scenario, or will have major issues with attachment, such as avoidant or anxious attachment. There are all kinds of books on attachment issues. That's a separate class, but it's also very painful to endure as an adult. So getting mom to leave violent relationships is pretty important, not only for children, but also for grandchildren, because that trauma is imprinting, and there is actually new research that shows it's actually changing your mitochondrial DNA, which you pass down for generations if you reproduce after experiencing trauma. It literally imprints into who you are and reproduces into the next generation. So as a result of all of that, Cabarrus County has some very specific things that we need. We need more behavioral health specialists and primary care offices. We need IPS supportive employment. What IPS means is individual placement and support. That is for people who have a mental illness. It's evidence-based to enable them to go to work and work a job. Many of these people are able to work. We don't want them all to be drawing disability if they're able to work. We just have to create an environment where they can be successful at work. We need more Spanish-speaking therapists. We need psychiatrists for children, adolescents, and adults desperately. And we also need specialized service providers for individuals with autism, behavior disorders, and attachment disorders. I'm gonna shift a little bit now, because I want to discuss one of our more significant barriers to meeting these needs, and that is our state's LME/MCO system. And I also want to remind you that this is not simply my opinion, but the opinion that I have vetted with the Child Protection Team in drafting this over the last several months. According to many of our community agencies, Cardinal Innovations is continuing to come in too late and supply our children with what they need just too little. It's just too little, too late. We don't have enough in-home services and supports. We don't have enough therapeutic foster care. And as of right now, there are pretty much no children being admitted to PRTF or psychiatric residential treatment facilities. Cardinal, basically, my understanding is that Cardinal has determined that PRTFs in the state are not rendering good quality care to children who need to go. And I would agree with that. Our PRTFs are not rendering good quality care for children who need to go to them, but we still have a population of children who need to go to PRTF. So these would be, we probably have maybe forty a year in Cabarrus County. It's a small population, but it is an extremely sick and potentially dangerous population of children. When you need a PRTF, you need a PRTF. And we just don't have a facility that we can get access to or that we can get paid for right now. Additionally, Cardinal has a lack of services to Cabarrus County. What we were told in December of 2019, we had a meeting about this, and what we were told is that the reason Cabarrus County has a lack of services is that Cardinal has geographical radius rules about how many service providers they can approve within a set geographical region. So they determine, you know, based on their statistics, how many therapists we need in a set area. And all of ours are in Mecklenburg County, is what I've been told. Is that we are so close to Mecklenburg County that when they do the geography, the service providers that we need are down in Charlotte. That means that our population who needs medical That means that our population who needs Medicaid, who needs access to these services can't reach it because half of them can't drive, they don't have access to transportation, they can't afford it. Even if we could get them bus passes, they don't, there's no bus really that runs all over Mecklenburg County. Not to mention the fact that most of the service providers, both here and in Mecklenburg County, are booked solid and have waiting lists as it is. If you've seen the news recently, Mecklenburg County is having their own problems with Cardinal. Another problem that we've seen with Cardinal is that Cardinal always defaults to the clinical home for a traumatized child. I want to explain what this means. So the clinical home are vendors. Vendors are entities like Monarch, Alexander Youth Network, Turning Point. Their names you probably recognize. What happens if we have a child who we would classify as high need? So those kids that I was just talking about who may need a Level IV PRTF or a Level III sex offender treatment facility, or even in some cases, Level Twos, but who need therapeutic foster care because their behavior presentations are so significant. Cardinal gives care coordination for these kids for a period of time. And then they link them with a clinical home, who's going to be Monarch, Turning Point, one of those vendors. And then Cardinal basically turns them over to the clinical home. At that point, whatever the clinical home says is basically the word of God. There is no arguing with a clinical home once the clinical home has made up their mind. I have spent over fifty hours, and I'm not under-exaggerating on that, I could show you time sheets. I've spent over fifty hours this year, and it's only March ninth, dealing with cases where there is a disagreement between either our school system, DSS, DJJ, or the DA's office, between a child and their welfare in Cabarrus County and a clinical home. It is impossible to fight this anymore because Cardinal is always going to default to the clinical home, even if every other entity in this county who has touched that child disagrees with the outcome of the clinical home, and I have seen that. It is not possible to argue with the clinical homes anymore. Cardinal will not do it. What this does is it is increasing the trauma that our children are already experiencing because we're not responding appropriately to the trauma that they're experiencing. This is why our ED numbers are going through the roof and we've got almost one mentally ill child in the ED every single day, is because they're not getting enough interventions early on. Also, if you want to know, you know, why aren't you guys complaining? Well, we are. Cardinal has a grievance procedure policy. I polled our team and I said, "How many of you have filed a grievance against Cardinal Innovations?" Most of the team has at some point. DSS has filed numerous ones in the last ninety days, many of which are about the specific children I just told you I've been spending time dealing with. I asked them as a follow-up, "How many of you have ever had a grievance that got resolved in a way that you viewed successfully, where the child got the treatment that they needed after the grievance was filed?" Because I didn't want to stand up here in front of the Board of Commissioners and say on a televised broadcast if it wasn't true. Not a single member of my team has ever had a grievance that was resolved in a way that made them feel that the child was dealt with satisfactorily. Not a single one. Part of our problem is that we have a lack of qualified professionals making decisions. Cardinal has a lot of employees, but a lot of those employees are not clinicians. They are not licensed clinical mental health professionals. They have marketing degrees. So if we're trying to have conversations with them about significant issues that impact children, like reactive attachment disorders, children who have major clinical mental health diagnoses, they either don't understand what we're talking about because they haven't been academically trained to understand what we're talking about, or I think sometimes they think we're just grandstanding. I can assure you, we are not. There is also no hierarchy of folks to call upon for help. Back in the Richard Topping days, which for those of you who are not familiar with this, Richard Topping was the last CEO that Cardinal had. They currently have an individual named Trey Sutton. Before that, they had someone named Richard Topping. Richard got into a lot of trouble as a result of an audit that the State Auditor's Office did on Cardinal Innovations and the way that they were spending money. I'm no fan of Richard Toppings. I would not say anything positive about him. But one thing I can say is that the cabinet that Richard Topping had would listen to us. They had a chief medical officer named Dr. Renata Hall, who we could call Dr. Hall if we had one of these kids that were very, very sick, and we could get some help for those kids. We can't do that anymore. All of the current cabinet is in the NASCAR Hall of Fame, and they don't want to hear from us if we have a child with a major problem who needs help. They will not respond to us. They will not communicate with us. They've basically told us if we're not happy, we need to file a grievance, but if we file a grievance, absolutely nothing happens to make things better. What typically then happens is Cardinal will want to meet with us to have an educational meeting. I think it is very important that we all get on the same page and understand that a failure to agree or a failure to have a meeting of the minds about what is best for a child is not an event that triggers us to have or need education about Cardinal's policies. We are all very familiar with Cardinal's policies. What we need is a hierarchy that will allow us to help our children, which we currently do not have. And to be honest, I have very little, if any, hope that we will ever get any. I've been asking for it for six years. Members of my team have been asking for it for a decade. Until our state understands this and takes a real look at trauma and forces our LME MCOs to do the same, I see a very bleak future for our Medicaid population. I'm just going to be very honest about that because the trauma that I just explained and the ramifications of the trauma that I just explained are almost impossible to correct if we do not have support from the entity that manages the flow of Medicaid money. And so I think that it is time for our community to make some very tough decisions about what we want to do with regard to Cardinal, but what I can tell you is that I do not think that our community is going to be able to go on like this. And I can tell you that if we continue to, our Community Needs Assessment is going to continue to increase and not get better because obesity, homelessness, mental health, and substance use are all caused by trauma and our children are not having trauma treated To shift a little bit, we need an LME MCO who understands that your ACE scores don't have to last a lifetime. You know, things that mitigate all of the bad stuff that I just spent the last twenty minutes talking to you about include getting our children's basic needs met, giving them safe, stable homes, food, clothing, and shelter, letting them play with other children and express their feelings, educating our parents about their own ACE scores, which directly impact your ability to parent if you've got your own untreated childhood issues that you're not managing, identifying ways to deal with ACEs that we have experienced, connecting folks with healthy support systems, using positive discipline, praising our children when they make good choices, providing structure and routine, and also giving children plenty of opportunity for outdoor play. This is why our community parks and our library programs are so critical and are honestly, as a mother who uses them both every week, they are wonderful for our children. We need to create a trauma-informed community if we really want to have resilience. So resilience is the human ability to thrive, adapt, and cope despite tough and stressful times. Resilience is a natural counterweight to ACE scores. And the more resilience a child has, the more likely they are to deal with negative situations in a healthy way that won't have prolonged or unfavorable outcomes. Resilience is not an innate characteristic, but it is a skill that can be taught, learned, and practiced. We just have to give children and families the opportunity to do it. This is also why our school system is so important because the presence of compassionate teachers, caring coaches, and other adult mentors help build resilience. The body always remembers what our mind forgets. So we need to start asking troubled children whom are making bad choices, "What happened to you?", instead of "What is wrong with you or why are you doing this?" They often don't know why, but they know what happened to them if we can get them to remember it. We also want to engage with the two-generation approach, which builds family well-being by intentionally and simultaneously working with children and adults in their lives together. That approach recognizes that families come in all different shapes and sizes and that families define themselves. A great thing that we have in Cabarrus County right now, and I brought you guys some postcards about this, is the SUN Clinic. Many of you probably know or have heard of Dr. Russell Suda. Thank goodness, Dr. Suda is really bad at retiring. He is not devoting as much time to delivering babies anymore. What he is doing is running the SUN Clinic, which also stands for Substance Use Network. Dr. Suda's whole goal is to make sure that women who get pregnant and who are substance users are able to get adequate prenatal care. If you are an opioid addict, whether you got pregnant as a result of human trafficking or whatever your story is, most gynecologists will not treat you because they don't know how to manage the substance abuse needs that you have with a growing fetus. Dr. Suda does. He has studied it. He has worked with this population for many years. And what he is working really hard to do is to give this population a place where they can go, where they can get their medical care, where they can get treated for the addiction issues, where a social worker and a licensed clinician can help them work out the trauma that they've experienced that led to the substance abuse in the first place so that we can get them a healthy baby. Because if you have a healthy baby, there's nothing statistically that's more life-changing for a parent than to have a child, as long as we can set them up to be successful. I think Dr. Suda's work is probably one of the best things that our county has right now, and I'm so proud of the work that Cabarrus Health Alliance and the Cabarrus Partnership for Children and all of the people who have worked with Dr. Suda to put this together have done because it's absolutely needed and something that we can and should all be very proud of. And last, I just want to say too that as Chair of our Child Protection Team, we are as a team, and people don't really see us a lot, you know, we're not on TV other than this report every year. We are a closed meeting that happens at either DHS or CHA once a month, but we are actively working to reduce childhood trauma and fatalities. We are advocating for SUN. We are advocating for effective mental health treatments all the time. We have a very strong partnership with the DA's Office, who has worked really hard to implement a human trafficking task force, which has honestly been the envy of other counties who now call us to say, "What are you guys doing and how can we implement it in our community?" There are many things, many things, to be proud of, but I think it's very important that we just kind of peel the onion back and call all this what it is, which is we have untreated trauma, and until we manage untreated trauma and we come up with some system for trauma-informed systems within our community, we're not going to see much budging on our Community Needs Assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Questions for Paula?
Paula, I don't really have a question. I just got a comment and mostly, you know, I've known you quite a while now and you've always been a very strong advocate for children, just like Ann and other ladies that's here in the room this evening. And I just appreciate all the work that you've done on this. I appreciate you for being the voice for those that don't have a voice. And, you know, I don't know how we're going to take the information that you gave us and come up with an action plan, but I hope that that will be something that we'll do in the near future, near future, and come up with something that will make things better for those that deserve the care that we're paying for them to get care, and we need to see to it that they get it. And so I'll do whatever I can, and I know that the county staff and the rest of this board will as well. So I thank you for all of your effort and for being that voice.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a quick comment as well. Thank you for those words, Commissioner Shue. And you started off saying this is unpleasant, and it is, but on the other hand, and this is a sober reminder of the way some children live in our community, and that's, for no other reason, I'm glad that for the last forty-five minutes, we get that reminder. So thank you for coming and doing what you're doing. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask, that was a lot of information about an organization or entity that I don't, I don't know if it's here or not, but out of the sense of fairness, it may be worth asking if anybody from Cardinal's here and would want to respond. And again, that's just out of a sense of fairness.
Sure.
Excuse me, they're not here. Ms. Calhoun, our Human Services Director, and myself met with the ...
Melissa.
Oh, I didn't see Melissa. Are you prepared to come speak or ...
I could, if you would like.
Melissa's ...
Sure. I want to ask a couple of questions and then we'll ...
Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Let Melissa speak as well. And of course, you and I, Paula, have had many, many discussions about a lot of these issues. I think some of the facts that you've pointed out are things that probably the public doesn't know about. And when we talk about the expense of a lot of this, a lot of the expense of these issues fall on the taxpayers. And so, you know, I am certainly always very interested in looking at ways that we can improve children's lives and also improve the burden to the taxpayer. And I think what was discussed about the McKinney-Vento Act and the expense to the school system, which I do not have that figure, but I know that it is significant to take care of those transportation needs, I think that that's something that we need to point out to the public when we're trying to identify ways to avoid children being homeless.
Right.
It makes their lives better. It improves our community, but it also helps with that financial burden as well. So I'm sure that we'll be talking more about that.
And on that note, Steve, there is not a single aspect of improving children's childhoods and keeping them from trauma that does not benefit the taxpayer. Because again, you have to look at lifespan development. The more of these children that grow up to be functional, resilient, tax-paying citizens who go to work and love living here, the better off we as a town are.
Well, exactly right. Those are children that will not be receiving services from our human service agencies.
They're not in jail.
They're children that will not be occupying our jail. I mean, there's so many, so many, so many things below the surface that I don't think we talk about or that the public really understands well enough. One of the questions I was going to ask you about this average of one child per day that goes to the emergency room at the hospital, then tell me what happens then to those children? When is there, how long do they stay in the emergency room? And then what happens afterwards?
Thank you for asking that, Commissioner Morris, because that is a very important thing for me to talk about. Some of our children, it really depends on what they present with. If we have a child who is suffering from some significant anxiety, but they're able to get them de-escalated, they might be able to go home in a few days. But if it's a child that is having a major mental health issue or who is experiencing schizophrenic hallucinations or is a danger to themselves or to the community, or has some out-of-control behaviors as a result of a comorbid diagnosis like autism, we have children who have sat in the hospital for five weeks waiting on a placement. As a general rule, we are typically not supposed to be placing children on a pediatric unit who are having a psychiatric problem, but you also cannot place children who are having a psychiatric problem on an adult unit. So what frequently happens is we have children that are residing in the emergency room. I've seen children sit in the emergency room with a babysitter at Atrium Cabarrus, and this is not the hospital's fault. I think it's very important that I state that. I feel that Atrium Cabarrus is doing a fantastic job managing these children, and they're making their lives as high-quality as they can. They've even implemented some overflow space for mentally ill individuals in the ED where they can go if they're going to have to kind of hang out there for a while for their own safety. It is a problem because we have a shortage of beds. We don't have ... We don't have psychiatric placement for children. There's not any beds to send them to. And if there are beds that open, they are frequently out in like the Jacksonville area or way up in the mountains. We just don't have facilities for them. And then what winds up happening is I see our community partners, people are looking at DSS like, "Well, come take these kids into foster care. Do something with them." DSS can't take a child into foster care if there's no abuse or neglect. And frequently, we have parents who love their children very much. Their children are sick and they don't know what to deal with, they don't know what to do with them. So it definitely becomes a funding issue. It becomes an insurance issue. It becomes an availability issue. And in many cases, it is a Cardinal issue. We have the same situation and the same problem with children who are going through the DJJ process and the court system as well. We have kids who probably sit in environments for too long where they don't belong, but that's because there's not an approved bed or placement for them to go to. But yeah, if your child is suicidal or homicidal and you take them to RED, they could well sit there for five weeks. That's not every case, but it is possible, and I have seen that happen in this community. It's a disgrace.
I guess a mentally ill child spending five weeks in the emergency room, is there any analysis of how that impacts their mental health issues? If they're not receiving treatment all during that time? Because there are no mental health professionals in the emergency room.
That is correct. So having spoken with families of children who have been in that environment, and thank God I've never personally been in it, nor have I had a child that I love, who I am responsible for in that, but I've spoken with parents that have. And what they've told me is that it makes my child feel like they just should have killed themselves. Because clearly, no one cares about them, because no one will even place them into the treatment facility that they need. Everyone agrees that they need treatment, but no one will get them where they need to go. And so I think for those children, it basically just sends a message that their life isn't worth very much, because nobody is taking... And again, that's an immature brain, and it's an immature mindset. But I can understand how a 15-year-old can draw that conclusion, that I'm sitting in here, I know I need help, but nobody's getting me the help that I need. And you know, a sad fact, but I always like to point this out to people too, is that we are going to have a percentage of the human population that is going to suffer from mental illness. Mental illness has been around since man has been around. It's just a scientific fact. The problem is that we don't really have a good method of dealing with this anymore. You know, we used to have institutionalizations, and in the 80s, the Reagan administration closed down the institutions. And that was probably good. Many of the institutions were abusing our mentally ill population. There are horror movies made about what used to happen in institutions. But we have to have some kind of middle ground. I mean, we still have population members who are very, very sick, and they need to be able to get effective treatment. And mental illness frequently rears its ugly head when you are in high school. For many people, it presents itself between the ages of 16 and 25. And so we simply have to have some kind of plan for that percentage of our population who is suffering with an illness. We're not doing any good to stigmatize them or, you know, talk about them like they're disposable member of the population. They're not. They're human beings who, with proper treatment and medication, can be productive members of this society, just like the rest of us. But they have to get treated, and we're failing them. We as a state are failing them.
So of those children in the ER, would you have any idea of what percentage of them would be Medicaid-eligible and as opposed to private insurance?
I don't have that right now, Steve. I believe that the last time I checked that with Atrium Cabarrus, it was well over half. It was well over 50%. But I do not have an updated statistic on that for you. I would be happy to reach out to Tree Tang tomorrow and obtain one, though, that I could send to the board.
And as far as the alternatives for either the private-pay individuals or the Medicaid-eligible individuals, the result is basically the same. There's nowhere for them to go. Is that right?
Correct. That's correct. There's not enough places for them to go.
And I am told that if we had all the money in the world and we wanted to build a facility here in Cabarrus County with 50 beds to treat these individuals that were prohibited by law from doing so, is it 12 beds maximum?
That is my understanding.
16 beds?
That is my understanding.
And is that a federal rule, a state rule?
I honestly do not know the answer to that either, Steve. I don't know where that rule on the number of beds came from. And I think that is largely because they're trying to control the population of mentally ill children that are in a facility at a time, so that they're not learning bad behaviors from one another. But to your point, I mean, multiple facilities all across the state that are 16 or 12 beds would be helpful. We just don't have enough.
Recently visited with a neighboring county to look at plans that they have to build additional facilities. And they had two facilities on the same piece of property, but because of the regulations, one of them had to face one street and have an address on that street, and the other one had to face an adjacent street and have an address on that street, just to comply with the regulation. One was an adult facility. One was a child facility. But I mean, that's how...
It's difficult.
Those, I mean, those laws are making it really, really hard for us to improve that situation. And I think that's something that you and I both need to find out more about. I mean, who do we talk to to change those things? Is it our state?
Is it Richard Hudson? Is it...?
General Assembly? Is it our federal laws? You know, it is a serious situation that we should be able to positively impact. And through our Mental Health Task Force that the county initiated a couple of years ago, we have heard horror stories from parents that have been caught in these situations. And it was not, it was not a matter of money. It was a matter of having available facilities to deal with these situations. It's heartbreaking and it's expensive as well.
Extremely.
And I certainly appreciated some, I mean, you've given us a lot of good information, but you know, I think that probably all of us at some point or another look at situations within families that tend to perpetuate themselves. You know, and I know I've asked the question many times, you know, "What can we do to break the cycle? Why is it that way?" And I think you've provided one of the best explanations that I have heard with those ACE scores and how that follows the generations down. And I think dealing with this mental health, particularly the facility piece of it and making those services available, is the only way that we will ever break those cycles and improve those families' lives and be of benefit to society as well. So I thank you for all your work and all the information that you've brought to us. I hope a lot of folks are listening on television and hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Melissa, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but you're welcome to come to Mike if you would like. Melissa is...
While she's doing that, I was, I meant to add, as I was speaking earlier, that when I was relatively new to this board, we had a somewhat large meeting in this room with a lot of different stakeholders, and there were a lot of the same problems we mentioned then as Ms. Yost mentioned today. So hearing that possibly not much had changed is a little frustrating. But again, out of a sense of fairness, that was a lot to be said about an entity. I think, you know, with all due respect, you just maybe give a broad-based response.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to respond. It's...
And that I did not enter. Melissa Bunker with Cardinal Innovations.
Yes. My name is Melissa Marshburn-Bunker. I serve as the Regional Executive for the Southern Region of Cardinal Innovations Healthcare. The Southern Region includes Cabarrus County, Mecklenburg County, Union, Stanley, and Rowan Counties. We at Cardinal Innovations absolutely recognize that there are systematic challenges around our justice-involved youth and the children who are in care with Department of Social Services, and that we are fully aligned and believe that in collaboration with Cabarrus County that we will be able to bring some of these things in alignment. I would like to note four major areas where I believe we are all in agreement. The first, of course, is the health and wellness and the safety and the permanency of those that we care for. We are also very committed, both of us, Cabarrus County and Cardinal Innovations, to aligning our continuum of services for the children who are involved in the social services and the justice system to ensure that their immediate and appropriate placement with immediate treatment resources is available. We are both aligned and we agree that creating a shared understanding of the Medicaid and the public safety net system that serves county residents with behavioral health, substance use disorders, and developmental disabilities, and collaborating across these stakeholders and across the multiple agencies in order to address the gaps is absolutely imperative. And lastly, we absolutely recognize that we look forward to collaborating. And this is the part where a lot of action has actually been underway for quite some time. And we are proud to mention that in an effort to work on all of these systematic issues, our CEO has been collaborating with Department of Health and Human Services and a third party to actually jointly develop a mutually agreed plan of work to address these systematic issues directly. We are also committed to engaging a third-party consultant to work with Cardinal and the stakeholders in order to develop a child welfare model. And lastly, there is a convening of county commissioners from across all 20 of our counties that will happen with Cardinal Innovations leadership and the Department of Health and Human Services to discuss the systematic challenges that were mentioned here today. And that invitation will be going out across our 20 counties to all of our county commissioners and county managers next week. And finally, I'd like to offer the opportunity to be on a more regular relationship with each of you as county commissioners in this community, as well as coming before the board on a more consistent basis to provide any information, answer questions, and to be able to give a full picture of the current system and situation in Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Let me, just for clarification for folks that may be watching, does Cardinal provide any resources to any citizens that are not Medicaid-eligible?
We provide services to Medicaid-eligible recipients and also recipients who have no insurance or are otherwise considered state-funded services.
Okay. Because sometimes that gets a little foggy as to how those services are provided. But your primary mandate is for Medicaid-eligible and uninsured?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Does anybody else have questions or comments for Melissa?
I don't know that I have them from Melissa. I just have them about the situation in general. I know that we've heard issues for quite some time, you know, with Cardinal. And I don't know how long you've been with them or what, but through the systems. And so I hear what you're saying about the four things and the collaboration and all. What concerns me is while these consultants and collaborations and all are going on, there's still children who aren't getting placed to get the service they need. So for me, it's time to quit talking and acting and get something accomplished, because our kids are who are suffering, our children. We can talk all day long in this room about what's going on, but there's, until something's happening with the children who have the need, it's not doing any good. So we've got consultants and all these meetings and all that can take time. They don't have time. You know, so my thing would be, how do we get this moving forward and find some positive action to put it in place? And I guess then I go to, when, Paula, you're talking about the fact that, you know, we don't have these things, or is it federal or is it state? I would assume that Cabarrus County is not the only county that's having this issue, regardless of, I mean, it's not, I'm not trying to find fault. I don't care about fault. I want to find a solution and move forward. So with that, I assume we're not the only ones. So is there not some coalition or somebody working to try to change this and get more in the state? Because like I say, I don't think we're an isolated case.
Commissioner Hinek, you are correct. Cabarrus County is not an isolated case, and that is the reason why we are excited about that last bullet where the state is coming together, Department of Health and Human Services, in our 20 counties to be able to talk about this issue. I will, to answer your question, I have only been working in Cabarrus County for about six to seven months. It has been my honor to be able to meet with Ms. Yost and the other leaders in Cabarrus County. And for the past six months, it has been my goal to be ingrained in the community so that as the executive leader in this region, I am very well aware of the needs, so that then I am able to build an appropriate strategic plan for how this county and the other counties within the Southern Region are going to be able to assimilate in and to make some of these systematic changes. It's personal for me, because I absolutely believe that healthcare is personal. I live right at the edge of Cabarrus County and Mecklenburg County, and to have had the opportunity to come back in this community and to work where I live is very personal for me. And I know Ms. Yost knows that. She and I have worked side by side. I just feel personally, I have not had the opportunity to be able to pull the trigger on some ideas and some things that could move the needle. And for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Cardinal today, that's why I'm proud to be here.
Diane, to answer your earlier question, I think one of the issues that we have as a state is that we have to consider that the population that's having this problem is mentally ill. And many of the times, their families are mentally ill as well, or there is some form of predisposition. So an issue that we have is when things get really bad, we often don't have people who can advocate well for themselves, or they're afraid that if they do advocate for themselves, somehow they won't get funded the way that they should. That's also a fear that our vendors have, because our vendors get paid by, like the clinical homes, get paid by Cardinal. So if they do something to make Cardinal angry, there is a fear among clinical providers that they'll never work again. So I think we have to understand that because of the way, you know, you don't want to bite the hand that feeds you is kind of the attitude that's heavy-present in large portions of the state, both with our mentally ill population, their families, but also with our vendors. And I think that creates part of the problem. I'll also say too, early intervention is key in every single one of these situations. The earlier we can identify that there is a mental health concern and get that mental health concern met, the better off we are. If we can identify that there is a problem when a child is 11, we need to fix that problem before the child is 14, because you just said something so wonderful and powerful, which was, our children do not have time for this. And to Commissioner Kiger's point, I was here when we had the meeting two years ago where we tried to work this out. And we are honestly in the same, if not a worse, position now because we're not dealing with needs when we identify them, and things are really spiraling for many of these kids. I mean, I'm now getting to the point where children that I was probably working on their case three years ago are going to wind up in the DA's office now based on how old they are. And it's a scary perspective, because it all could be avoided if we would just do early intervention and treat these children earlier. There's no reason for that number of kids to be in the ED. They're just not getting the treatment that they need. They're just not getting the treatment that they need early enough.
Well, we thank you very much, both of you, for being with us. I think our, our next agenda item is going to involve some folks that will also talk about, about that early intervention. But I view this as a very serious problem. I'm glad that, that Cardinal is convening a, a group of county commissioners and certainly look forward to being involved in that. I have heard about individual cases repeatedly over the years. I have requested a chronological list of those cases and what those outcomes were and how long it took to arrive at those solutions. So we certainly will be, be talking more about that.
We are working on that now.
Great. So, so thank you, thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shu, I believe the board that you serve on is, is that board. I think you should be getting your invitation.
The, the board that I'm on is the Cardinal Innovations Advisory, Commissioner Advisory Board. And that is meeting on the 17th of March, I think, unless they, we got our District 10 meeting that night. So obviously I won't, can't do both.
Right.
But they moved it from the second or third up until the 17th.
I, I believe so. If, if that is a meeting night that's conflicting with another one, you might want to, one of you others might want to step in and attend that.
Great. Okay. Next item on our agenda is a presentation by the Early Childhood Development Task Force Advisory Board. And we're pleased to have a number of those folks with us tonight. And it appears to be led by Jackie Whitfield and, and Benfield. Welcome.
And thank you, Commissioners Steve Morris and all the county commissioners. And it's wonderful to be in a county that realizes when we have issues that they form Task Force to explore and develop ideas so we can come back to you. So two years ago, when there was some bleak information about early childhood education, specifically with our four-year-olds, this task force was formed. And two, about a year ago, we came and updated what we were doing. And we have continued with a group of cross-sectional experts and advocates for childcare, met every month with subgroups meeting more. And we have come up, we have looked at the North Carolina Early Childhood Action Plan, which has 10 goals. Many of those goals were what Ms. Yost was talking about in one through seven. The early childhood, we've looked at the early childhood profile indicators and related pathway indicators and as much available county data as we could get our hands on for children from birth to about six years old. Our findings led us to focus on two goals. Goal eight out of the North Carolina Early Childhood Plan, which is high-quality early learning. And that looks at babies, toddlers, and young children across North Carolina and Cabarrus County with access to high-quality opportunities to engage in learning. And then goal nine, which is to be on track, all children to be on track for school success, and young children across North Carolina will enter kindergarten on track for reaching their developmental goals. So we took that information along with the strategic plan and collaboration with data. And as we come forth, we know certain things. We know the importance of treating county progress as a business proposition. One, that must be carefully outlined with ongoing cost analysis associated with all county programs and initiatives. We also know that the investments must be made to improve the quality of life for young working families in Cabarrus County. It was quite evident to us that we have lack of affordable and high-quality childcare opportunities for families that want to go back to work. There's very little care for children from six weeks to two years old and much-needed, lots of waiting lists for children from three to five. There is an urgent need in this county for increased capacity and quality in childcare. Within our borders, we have what is called childcare deserts. There's no place to put your child if you want to go back to work. We want to share how we can provide consistent, high-quality support for working adults, worry-free childcare to provide more stable and engaged workforce, as well as to provide a county model for the state initiative, therefore opening the doors for state and federal monies in our county and possibly private foundations. So we come here today to ask for a position, an early childhood employee who would be full-time, who would be involved in looking at all 10 of the goals in the North Carolina Early Childhood Plan and coordinating with all the different agencies and people who do work for our young children. We would also like to see research and documentation in the county. And we would like to see collaboration and opportunities to support expansion of quality childcare, which would involve both public and private partnerships involving our faith-based community and finding ways of partnering with higher education so that we could offer really top-notch childcare for parents so they could go back to work. And so our children would be in stimulating and high-quality environments so that they would learn and be ready to enter public education. We feel like that this initiative has many moving parts and that it would take lots of effort and partnership, advocacy, and great determination. But being a citizen of this county and seeing all the wonderful things that happen, we feel like on that task force that this is very possible and very doable. So the task force comes asking for a position that will help us move forward in offering childcare and early education for our most vulnerable citizens, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Jackie or Ann?
I would assume this is a full-time position that you're asking for or what?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep. One of the things to add to, to Ms. Whitfield's presentation is that Rodney and I both met with Ms. Benfield and Ms. Whitfield in an effort to look at one of these options of a public-private facility that would, would not only benefit the community, but maybe have a possibility to benefit our employees as well, using some federal and state and local money. We have a lot of young parents that work for us that also have those same issues. So that we were looking at a joint facility that maybe we would be, be able to have spots for the community as well, but also offer our employees several spots as well and at a subsidized rate as well. So we'll continue to explore that. I think we had a good meeting last week and explored the All Saints Church as a possible location for that facility. So we're going to keep working the numbers and working and see how that would work. But I know definitely that would be an attractive benefit for our employees, because when we have snow days or when they have days off and they've got, or when the children are out of school, it's not, it's not uncommon to walk through and see the kids in the offices and, because there's nowhere to take them. So they either have to stay home or, or they, luckily, we allow, allow a flex or to work from home a lot, but some of our positions don't allow you to do that, so they have to be in the office. So we do allow them at times when it's safe to, for the children to accompany them. But this would help, help alleviate some of those issues. So stay tuned on that. Hopefully, that'll be something that we can pull together that makes sense financially and that you would be open to consider. So Rodney, you got anything?
Mike, we had talked just briefly about this at some point. Do we know what surrounding counties are doing, if anything? I know the school system's got the Mary Frances Wall Center.
Right.
But what about the other surrounding counties?
We have not reached out to them yet. That's going to be part of our due diligence as well.
I'm hoping that we'll look into that and sort of how you figure it out. You know, I know we got, what, 1,100 employees there about, somewhere there about.
They're getting close to 1,300.
Well, we, we just keep growing, it seems like, you know? But anyway, that's a lot of kids to be looked out for, you know?
Right.
And I think it's a good thing that if we could do that. But I'd like to find out what the other neighboring counties are doing and, and how they're sizing their facility and all that.
Right. Yeah, so I think from a staff's perspective, we agree 100% with their report. And we have made those adjustments to the budget so that it's in there with the number that you received back at the retreat as well.
I have a quick question on slide number three at the top. And I know that there's some Cabarrus County Schools personnel here that I'm sure will be happy to answer all our questions about construction, but probably none about academics. So we're, we're going to not ask them, but the, the 15% of 11th graders, only 15% met all the ACD College and Career Rating Miss Benchmarks? Do you, that sounds like a very, very low, embarrassing number.
One of the issues that the task force had was collecting current data. And so the 2017, that's from 2017, it comes from NC State and Emerging Issues. And, and yes, it's alarming.
So that's statewide?
That's state, that's for Cabarrus County.
That was for Cabarrus County. It was published at the Emerging Issues Conference that NC State held.
Do you know what those benchmarks are?
Well, that, that's the ACT, which is a college, college entrance exam. And, and that's the benchmark they used on that one. Now, I will, as a former educator, most of our students took SAT. So why they use the ACT, I do not know. My concern when looking at that, which, you know, you have to look at the base for a child that's in high school. So if 48% of your first graders are proficient in reading, that means 52% are not. And if a child is not proficient, usually by the end of second grade, definitely third grade, they have a high rate of being that prison pipeline. All, all the things that Ms. Yost talked about, they fall into that category. So having really top-notch childcare development, because the first 2,000 days that a child is born is when the most brain development happens. So if they're in a stimulating, positive environment and their parents are able to go back to work, that will lead to closing that gap.
Okay. That just, somehow that generally jumps off the, the page and maybe there's a lot to it.
I will tell you, it did for me too, and it's very alarming and very sad to me.
Well, thank you for coming.
Actually, when Pam Dubois and Liz Poole went to the Emerging Issues Conference and viewed this data, is when the Early Education Task Force was formed shortly after that.
I guess one question I would have is how, how do we compare with other counties? Do you have any information on that? Is that, that percentage common across the state? Are we better, worse, about the same? Do you know?
We have all the data for all the counties that was published by NC State in 2017. We don't have any new recent data from Emerging Issues.
Right.
But we could make that available if you want to review the other counties around.
Would be interesting to know. I mean, obviously, that does not in any way diminish the fact that it is a serious problem that needs to be addressed. You know, and so thank you for the, the work that you've been doing. You know, as part of our community needs assessment, some of the discussion about availability of childcare has been tremendously disturbing. I mean, that's another one of those issues. I mean, certainly, the, the financial impact to families is, is a piece of it. But more than that, as I understand it, it doesn't matter how much money you have, the slots are not, not available and the facilities are not available.
That's true.
So there has got to be a solution for that. And, and so I very much appreciate the, the investment that, that your task force has made in determining that. And I, I think, you know, County Manager talked about county employees. That's just a tiny little piece of the overall community that is experiencing this problem. So, so I think that, once again, it, it goes back to what I talked about earlier about it, it is an investment that brings returns. If we can, if we can deal with this issue and give these children a better footing, then that's less money that we have to spend on them down the road. That's also, when we deal with that childcare issue, that is putting more people back in our workforce, contributing to our local economy. I mean, there's, there's so many positives and so many directions that, that we would be wrong to overlook all, all of those, those factors. So, you know, I, I look forward to future discussions that, that we're going to have about the position that you have requested. I think that that, that might be a good example of, of one of those positions that could very possibly more than pay for itself in securing available resources that are out there to help with that situation. We have a local citizen that, that is very, very engaged in hungry children, children that are not receiving adequate nutrition. And, and our school system has done a tremendous job of, of providing meals during the summer months for many, many of these children. I was amazed to find out that we're only using about 24% of the available funds that are out there to provide meals for hungry children. And, and all this required to correct that situation is to have organizations and individuals that, that are willing to, to coordinate those services. The, the money's there to, to pay for it. So hopefully, we're making some positive steps in that direction. And I think the same thing may be true in this area. Maybe not to that great of a degree, but when, when these resources are out there and we're not providing the vehicle to take advantage of them, then I think we're guilty. So, so thank you for your work and thank you for your recommendation. And I'm sure we'll be talking about it more.
Thank you for beginning the task force.
Yep, absolutely.
And I was going to make just one more quick comment. And although Commissioner Poole is the liaison and a member of the task force, I'm the backup. So I do get all the email. I see the agenda and any comments that are made. And although I typically have scheduling conflicts and haven't made the meetings, I do pay attention. I do follow along. And I appreciate all of your hard work. And that is a very diligent, passionate group of citizens that are giving their time to do the, to do the work of that task force. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to discussion item 3.3 from Infrastructure and Asset Management. Management Courthouse Expansion Project Update, and we're glad to have Kyle Billifer to provide that. And Kyle, I don't think the rest of the group finds your topic interesting.
Apparently not.
Nothing personal.
Yeah, no, nor did I take it personally. This is Alan Udi, he's the Construction Manager for Cabarrus County. He came on a few months ago, so he'll be passing things out as I explain them. I'm actually going to go up to the smart board to explain a few things. Lauren, can you bring that up?
Yes.
So, wanted to take the time today to kind of talk about, one of the deliverables that we had talked to the board about was going through the interior and the exterior selections of the courthouse, and I've tried to have them, the, the architects, put together these packages for me at my request. Could you minimize it a little bit more for me, please, Lauren? Thank you. So this is gonna kind of go through the different types of interior finishes or selections that we're gonna have in the actual public corridor areas. So it's showing a terrazzo flooring, there are three different types that'll be going through that, there are actually different formats for different areas. A lot of the design that you do now in buildings is creating architectural wayfinding, so wayfinding without signs that are hanging from the different ceilings and hanging from the walls. So we're going to use a lot of our materials to provide an actual architectural wayfinding through the actual building. So I kind of wanted to show you how resilient these materials are gonna be in the public areas. So terrazzo, very hard flooring, lasts for a very long time. You've obviously got porcelain wall tile that will go up well above where anybody would standing, and then in front of your different courtroom queuing areas and in front of your major departments, you'll have this type of wood paneling. It'll be the same wood paneling that would be in type of the courthouses, and these will designate areas where the public needs to enter, so courtrooms and such. It obviously shows all your, your Corian material and your different paint, and I can kind of go through, all of these are listed on this first board as you go through, and, and then we'll carry it around to Chairman Morris, and there is a second board also. Could you go to the next page, please, Lauren? Thank you. So this kind of shows your public restroom areas and what we'll be going with in terms of toilet partitions, the floor tile, again, it's terrazzo going through there, giving us that resiliency and that hardscape to hold up to it. Your different porcelain walls that go up and your ceramic tile and your accents that are gonna be flowing throughout the building, and obviously, all of your casework. So really, what to take away from this is a lot of the colors that we're using, the accent colors, we're using the Cabarrus blue to accent through, and actually, on this panel board, Commissioner Keiger, if you look at that panel board, it's got the actual, that blue ceramic tile that you're looking at? Yeah, so that actually, the large one, that'll actually be in front of our, our public bank of elevators, so we have a large public bank of four elevators, and that'll be the Cabarrus blue, and you can see part of the decal that's cut out from that to show that matching. So that'll be kind of your wayfinding of, here are the public elevators. Lauren, you can go to the next slide. This shows you your, your courtrooms, so what you've got going through it is, again, your solid surface countertops, has your different florings that you're going to have through it, again, your porcelain walls throughout that, and then it goes into your acoustic panels. So all of our courtrooms will have acoustic panels in them, but those acoustic panels won't start until eight feet, and they will start after that. And this is obviously your wood veneer, that will be the entire judge's and different witness stands and different stands that go throughout it. Where also, one of the alternates we'll have in the package will be some type of wood on the ceiling above the judge. So that's, that's one of the alternates that we're going through right now with our value analysis. Next slide. This kind of shows you the area for both the judges' suite and the DA's suite. So these are back of the house, but they're also of a, more of a resilient back of the house and a high-end back of the house. So we kind of went through all these finishes, and while they're not as resilient as what you would have in the public areas, they are quite resilient for the actual use that the DA's and judges give them. And we have shown a lot of these to the judges, and I think the DA's have, and I see DA Shanley's in here, I'm not sure that they've seen all of the selections, but they've seen the different color palettes of what we're looking at. You can go to the next slide. Okay. So this is the remaining of, of the back of the house, so clerk of courts areas, D, public attorneys, public defenders, things like that, that'll be going through. This kind of goes through how we're gonna do the accents through all the carpet tiles, we are using everything in terms of carpet, that's state contract, so that's exactly what you use, you go through this building, that's all state contract carpet, and we keep large stocks of it, we carry about five or six, six different types that we put throughout the buildings. These are obviously be some different types that we'll have to store. So I guess I'm, I'm just looking for some feedback in terms of, is anybody have any very negative comments to make about what, what we had chosen? We had gone and looked at over ten different courthouses with the actual design team, so the actual users of the space, and then we went on another field trip where the actual Infrastructure and Asset Management Group went, and they physically touched all these materials in current buildings. They weren't often courthouses, actually, what we found, a lot of hospitals and different medical buildings use a lot of these types of resilient materials, and we went and not only met with the folks that designed them, but we actually met with the folks that maintained them, and they were nice enough to allow us to take our hammers and our knives out and try to scratch them, etch them, break them, and also go into their back of house and look at how they repair them, and start to really get an idea of what we would be looking at, at our twenty-year mark, our thirty-year mark throughout the building, because the operating expense of this building is such an impact to the county, we wanted to make sure that some of the decisions we were making on the different finishes were resilient and were able to be continued, meaning, we weren't using something from a, from a supplier that was gonna be gone in three years. And that was a, a large concern that we worked through with both the design team and the construction manager at risk. Scroll on. Uh, to the next one? Okay. These are the exteriors, and obviously, I wasn't gonna bring a big, big panel board of this, but I did print out pictures, just two images, they should be on the right side of your computer, and this kind of gives you an idea, and I'm just gonna kind of point through them and, and give you an idea of where they would be. So this brick, you'll see it throughout the different building, but where the first place you can see it in the first image is actually where the sign is, where the public entrance is off of Church Street. That gives you an idea of what that brick is going to look like, and, and most times that you look at the rendering, you can't even tell it was brick, but it is, and it'll actually flow through a good portion of the building. A lot of it'll actually be on the Corbin side, but I chose to display it in the image to you at the public entrance. The next thing I wanna bring your attention to is our actual architectural concrete cladding, so that's a bulk of the building also. And you can see that by, by actually going vertical up and down the main public stairwell at the corner of the building, so kind of where the current means is and Church Street meet, and you can see what that material is. And we went and looked at a lot of those materials, and in fact, we use a significant amount of that, those type of materials in some of our larger buildings now. Obviously, it's come a long way since we've last used it. Frittered glass, so some of the group might not know what frittered glass is, to dumb it down, you know, you're looking at ceramic, basically silk-screened onto glass, in terms of what that might be and how that process goes along, and that is to cut down on our glare and obviously, our A-trac impact of our costs. Did you not like?
Thanks for dumbing it down for us.
I knew you were the one, the one that wouldn't be. Thank you. So to give you an idea, that's, that's obviously gonna also help us with some of our bird loss, there's been some concerns that we would have with the amount of glass we're putting on this building about having some bird loss, so we, we did wanna make sure that that came in to the design, and I'm not really sure that you will see that driving by, but as you walk by, you would see that. And there's a lot of instances that you could see that in buildings, a lot of, most of what's going on UNC right now is now all using frittered glass. The next one I wanna point out is kind of what your exterior mullions and your, your panels will look like in terms of your metal. You'll see those, basically your frames on your windows. The next thing I wanted to point out was your, your sunscreen, and I actually had them use a picture that shows them standing underneath it, but our sunscreens will be vertical, so they will be over our actual glass. So that's an image standing underneath it, but it will actually be affixed to the building, there'll be a gap between that and the actual facade, the glass facade.
Is that what we're seeing on the stairwell?
Yes, it is, yes. And that one, we may end up moving and, and taking that off of there and going with a different type of glass. We've had some issues with, when you start getting into your sunscreens, there's standard widths that are built, okay, so you can buy them at the standard cost. Some of our stairwells and how we wanted to do that, we were gonna end up being, having to do custom-made sunscreens. So as part of the value analysis that we've started to try to trim down some of those things we're looking at, if we should do something different with the glass there and the actual glazing of it to have to be able to remove the sunscreen. And the last thing I wanted to point out, because this is one of the biggest discussions that we had when we were looking at the first exterior rendings, is the, is the actual exterior kind of the timber panel that, that goes along and breaks up the glass and the different concrete throughout the building. So that was one of the first things that we looked at and showed the board and asked the board what they felt, and we felt that that was our best option to tie both the historic courthouse, the nineteen seventy-five courthouse and this building in together. That was a, a big part of it, is we just couldn't have one large concrete building, it wasn't going to mesh. So we tried to bring in some softer tones, and that's where those timber panels came from. The Infrastructure and Asset Management Group was quite skeptical of that type of exterior timber, timber panel, and we, we did go see three different locations that are utilizing it and have been utilizing it for, one of the locations has utilized it for ten years. And we went and literally went up on the roof and, again, tried to scratch it, pull it, push it off, and talked to the folks that maintain it, and they've had nothing but good things to say about it. So we're, we're very kind of, we're happy, we feel like we vetted both the interior and the exterior materials and are kind of moving along with the pricing of them now. So I'll open it up for any, any questions.
No, I'm gonna make a comment.
Sure.
I will tell you that the understatement of the year is when you said terrazzo will be there a little while, or something to that effect. We will all be dead and gone, the building will be abandoned still standing a hundred years from now, and that terrazzo will still be over there. So, it, it will be there more than a little while, and that is a, that, the best floor we could possibly use in that public area with the amount of traffic that we're coming going, and, and the rest of it. You know, the color schemes, everybody has a little different view of what's in, what's out, what's modern, how to do it, so, you know, I think you guys have done a good, good job of putting something together that we can be proud of and that will, you know, basically is a, a center of our community and will be for the next fifty, fifty years. At some point in time, somebody's gonna look at and say, well, I wonder why they did blue. Well, it doesn't matter what you do, somebody's gonna say that somewhere along the line. So what you've done, to me, looks fantastic, I think you've had good, a good relationship with ceiling, to me, they have delivered every step of the way. You maybe could comment more on that than I can, but just from the outside looking in, I'm, I'm excited about where we're going, and of course, to say nothing about Messer and, and where they're going. So, thank you for, and I mean, I'm sorry I sound like a cheerleader, but thank you for all of your hard work, and I'm, I'm excited about, about getting going.
You don't, don't apologize for being a cheerleader, that's, that's a good thing. You stole my comment about terrazzo floors. My place of business has terrazzo floors that are eighty-five years old, and they're still in perfect condition.
Not your only.
Yeah, exactly, so, and, and that's the, the, the comment that I've made most frequently about this facility is that we want to build something that will last us sixty to seventy-five years, and I think those are the types of materials that will do it, and I, I think everything looks great, I like the color schemes. Good job.
So don't value analysis or value engineer the terrazzo out of the building?
It would, I would be interested to know what that figure was, yeah.
Well, it's actually, we looked at it.
Preferably no.
Yeah, we've looked at it for the second and third floors, and, and right now, it's the last item, I told them to even look at it, 'cause I felt that it was detrimental to the building moving forward. Every, right now, everything's on the table, so.
Right.
Just to comment on the reference to interior.
Yes, sir.
My observation is, nobody goes to the courthouse unless they absolutely have to, unless you work there, but anyway, it's, has a soothing, calming effect, I think, and it sort of lightens the burden for people that do go there, and makes it easier on the eye for those that do work there. So I appreciate the detail of all of that to make it a little more soothing.
Well, we were lucky that our logo colors weren't fire engine red, 'cause then it would've backfired on me.
Yeah, somebody thought ahead when they cited that color, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to our Innovation and Technology Report, and we welcome Debbie Brennan.
As you know, the county adopted a new strategic plan in December that has five strategic, strategic initiatives. The top two strategy priorities were selected by the board during the fiscal year twenty-one budget planning process, and they are the transparent and accountable government and a healthy and safe community. This afternoon, we're gonna talk about, give an innovation report on a resource developed to increase government transparency and accountability, and the Employee Book Club books for March and April are gonna focus on creating a healthy and safe community. So in March and April, employees will be listening to two books, Born to Walk, The Transformational Power of a Pedestrian Act, and The Nature Fix, Why Nature Makes Us Happier, Healthier, and More Creative. These books, available through the Cabarrus County Library on Hoopla, discuss the benefits of walking for personal health and the community as a whole. They also explore the government and community challenges that prevent walkable communities, including public policy, zoning, urban sprawl, and pedestrian safety. These books were chosen in collaboration with the kickoff for Walk Cabarrus, a community-wide walking campaign focused on creating a healthier community. Employees are encouraged to listen to these books and join the Walk Cabarrus County Employee Group as part of our wellness program. We invite everyone in the community to sign up for this campaign to help our community reach the goal of one billion steps in a healthier community. The campaign kicks off on March fourteenth, and you can sign up at walkcabarrus.com. Tonight, I have Joe Battinelli with me, he's the Cabarrus County Supervisor of the Business and Locations Innovative Team, and David Thrift, our Tax Administrator, and they're gonna present the Real Estate Sales Analysis Application. It's an application that provides government transparency and accountability. This resource also is available by the county's website, also meets three goals of our innovative initiative. It educates and empowers our staff and citizens, it was developed using existing resources, and it provides visual analysis and measurement of the county's real estate sales. And I'm gonna hand it over to Joe.
Thank you. The Real Estate Sales Analysis Application, which you see in front of you, allows the users to search for an address. The application will draw a buffer around that address and highlight property sales made within the last two years that touch or inside that buffer. The buffer can be adjusted to return properties in a smaller or larger area, and each property is organized by sales type, qualified, pending qualification, and unqualified sale, which can be seen in the legend at the upper right-hand corner. Lean on my partner here.
So for some definitions there, qualified sales being the ones highlighted in green are those true arms-length transaction sales, those market transactions that we have considered to be the most important and valuable in our analysis of, of sales. Unqualified sales are those that we have, through our analysis process, unqualified through the Department of Revenue standards as being something that's not arms-length, for example, a foreclosure, an auction sale, something between relatives, so those are some examples of, of those. A pending qualification is one that we've either not yet addressed or just waiting for more information, to gather more information on.
This application also allows users to This application also allows users to focus on an area, like a neighborhood, and see a quick list of properties organized by parcel number. You can of course click on any property in the list to get additional data. The public can use this to research sales in their neighborhood. So.
So this, this is just a great tool for, not only the public, but our staff has been able to use this as well in our analysis when we're doing our neighborhood reviews. So it just gives a, a visual snapshot of sales that are taking place. We've been able to use it in the appeals process when we sent those notices out, as we're talking with our, our property owners, allowing them to see a visual of the sales that we've used to announce, to do the analysis on their neighborhoods.
And any property in this application can be clicked on to return sales data as well as links to map Cabarrus, the property deed, and the tax appraisal card, which allows the users to gather additional property data that we have here at the county. And finally, if users, users can view all properties or properties sold between a certain year by using our filter widget, which you're gonna see there, where that's all the sales, or you could go and select the years and type in the four-digit year and filter it to just that selection. We also have a help section with, it's the letter I with a circle around it. And it has some definitions on code and land type definitions. It also just goes through some scenarios that our users encounter and shows you little videos of that as well.
This is available on the county website. If you go to cabarruscounty.us/revaluation and you scroll down to Resources and select the card, Real Estate Sales Analysis. Any questions or additional information you wanna provide, David?
Quickly, is that updated, sales-wise, closed sales?
Yes, that's pulled nightly.
The first time, though, I guess it was the first time the public got to see it, was that the Government 101 last week? Is that right? Yeah, our Communications and Outreach Department, Kasia and her crowd, held a Government 101 class, and it was on the revaluation process. So there was about 15 or 20 individuals from the public that came in to learn about the process. David and his staff had an excellent presentation, and this, and this was part of the presentation. And at the end of the day, they had a subdivision that they had to go out and, or, or that they had to appraise themselves right here in the classroom. So, and it was an excellent activity. The whole day was great. And David and Kasia and they, and their staffs both all deserve a great, good job on that one, because it was a fantastic day. And at the end, it just, we always give the, the participants the opportunity to say a few words, and every one of them were very appreciative of the process. And I'm not sure if we didn't, we didn't tape that, so it would've been nice for you to hear some of the, some of the conversations, so. But again, I just wanna make sure publicly, we say thank you to David and Joe and, and Kasia as well, for a good day.
I did speak to one of the participants who was there who couldn't say enough positive about the day and the information that was provided, so.
So that's 15 down, 200,000 to go.
Well, that's, that's our goal. So I wanna thank Kasia especially as well for, for putting that together. And then our IT department for giving us the resources to be able to show and communicate with our, our property owners. It just makes a revaluation process a lot smoother when we can have that interaction. The tools we have, the resources that we have from, from a tax department are, are excellent, so.
They, they have a lean staff, and they're able to do that, that huge task just because of the support that the technology gives them and gives them the ability to do so much with, with that size staff, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, just for David. When you've got a concerned taxpayer that their revaluation was more, which, you know, maybe a few, there may be a few out there, you know? But when you show them the comparables around, the sales analysis and all that, does that pretty much settle them down to the point where that they understand that there is a science to this and it's not just numbers pulled out of the air because, for whatever reason? But there, there is a science behind it?
Sure, it's, it's just a great tool to have to be able to help them visualize, you know? We often give them that information in conversation piece, but it's, it's better to be able to visualize that and see it on the map. And they can see in relation to their house, you know, what those similar properties that are sold. So it's, it's been helpful in that process, definitely.
Okay, we thank you very much. Okay, we move now to discussion items for action. And first up, our required road improvements at West Cabarrus High School. Jonathan will lead us on that, and I think we have several folks from the school system as well.
We do, and Kelly Klutz was not able to join us, but I think the information you have before you will explain with the budget items. And Susan Barrington has already reviewed those and, as part of this. As you're all well aware, we're still working on the road improvements necessary for West Cabarrus High School. Those originally were in the Branch and Associates contract, the, the general contractor. The original estimates came in very high. They were able to, the school staff was able to negotiate with Branch to pull those out of that contract without penalty and have gone ahead and bid that themselves. As you can note from my narrative, it was bid, there were only two bidders, they had to re-advertise, they did not get additional bids. They did meet the requirements and opened those two bids. It came in less than those estimates we had gotten from Branch, and they'll go through the exact numbers with you. It is, however, more than what was in the original budget, but we are able to cover that additional with contingency that's already in the construction budget. So again, because of timing, trying to get this started as quickly as possible, they are asking that you suspend your rules of procedure and vote on this tonight. But the motion would include approving the low bid as well as the, allowing the Finance Director to prepare the associated budget amendment and project ordinances as needed, and I'll let them go through the specifics.
Thank you, Jonathan. We appreciate it. As Jonathan said, you know, our first estimates on the project were almost two and a half times what we had in the budget for it. And so we were really concerned about that. Met with DOT, Ryan and I both met with them several times, talked about our scope, tried to pull that project more into, in line with what we felt should be in the budget for it. And they also gave us the opportunity to go out and bid the project separately outside of the contract from, from our branch contractors. And in doing so, we timed it also to try to make it more advantageous to us in a bid climate. It was in the spring of the year when contractors are filling up their coffers for, for the summer months, which I feel like we might get a little bit better pricing at that point in time. Didn't get as many bidders as we had hoped, but we did feel like we got a pretty sound bid from the contractor based on the market today. Our, our approved funding amount was a million and $82,500 left in that portion of our allowance in the contract. And our bid came in at $1,368,814, which is about $286,000 above what we had in the allowance. As Jonathan just mentioned, we work with the Finance Directors from both parties, and they've identified the contingency monies that has not yet been allocated. Do you know, we had some contingency the county held. We're asking you to release that portion of the contingency. And then we will use a little small portion of our sales tax to tune up about $68,000 to fund this without having to go to additional funding.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lauder or Mr. Cohn?
I might've missed something, 'cause I had to take a break, but the piece that says if the cost of the work exceeds that budget after bidding, a budget amendment will be necessary. Did I miss anything there?
Yeah, so that's what we're asking for.
That's what we're asking for. So there's, there's still available contingency money within the contract that was budgeted on the job we had not requested. So to supplement the, the overage, we're gonna ask for the use of that contingency money plus an additional $64,814. Susan may be able to speak to that.
Don't anticipate it higher than that, those two?
Correct.
That's the part I missed. It sounded like an open-ended thing. I was just, sorry.
No.
Had to take a break.
It was open-ended before we took our bids last month.
That does exhaust the contingency for the school, though, is that right?
It does, yes, sir.
The portions you hold, yes.
Hopefully, nothing else pops up.
That's right.
Can you walk through the drawings so that the public can see exactly what the work you're gonna do?
Sure. You wanna roll through those?
Just basic.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're already into the profiles, yes. The project basically consists of about 2,400 feet of lane widening on Weddington Road and two intersections. Those two intersections, one would be for a bus and apparent drop-off entrance, as you see on the right-hand side of the screen on the west.
That's where, that's where our center, yeah.
And that's the, that's the western part of the project. It starts there with a widening for a turn lane for a right-turn movement. And it also winds out to three lanes, allows for the left-turn movement coming from the east, or coming from the west. And that would be our bus and parent drop-off, and we go down farther to the next entrance, which is right across from the exit from Weddington Hills Elementary School and, and Winkler Middle School. And that would be a signalized intersection at that point. We do have full signal movement there, which allows for the brakes in traffic, allows for brakes at the bus and the parent drop-off traffic as well. And then the lane continues to, continue widening on down to where it ties in with the lane widening that already exists for the Weddington Road-Winkler entrance. And so it'll be a three-lane section all the way through from, well, we start our project all the way through till basically out to George Law's Parkway.
Got you. I'm glad you mentioned the signal. I was thinking about that today, and I couldn't remember ever hearing, and I assumed it was, but yes.
It also includes cabling to tie that signal to George Law's Parkway to allow those to coordinate.
You have to sequence the lights.
Okay, got you.
So that first driveway to the right there, that's gonna be going in right by the ball fields. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
The ball fields will be on the right, and then go around, and then the other one is where the lights. Actually, it's an intersection from, like you said, the other two schools.
Correct.
Yes, so the first one will take buses and parent drop-off traffic, have buses in and out, parent drop-off traffic in. And then on the other one, we'll have all student traffic and all visitors and all staff parking in, in and out there as well.
There's just a little bit of a knoll right there, as you know. Is that gonna have to come down some as part of this project?
No, sir, the knoll doesn't come down. Obviously, the roadway does have a little bit of a different profile in there to allow it to be a little less obvious. But we do still have our about 550 so site distance. We did check the site distance, especially for the buses, 'cause they're gonna be exiting that area as well. I, I do know that DOT is working with a project with a developer right across the street. There'll be another driveway coming right across from our bus entrance. There'll be a new housing development that's prepared to go there. And there'll be some road improvements, obviously, with the housing development. It will probably modify the intersection even further than what we're building.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can act on this tonight.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to award the bidder, the bid to the low bidder and authorize the Finance Director to prepare the associated budget amendment and project ordinances if needed. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And on a different note, you just love new topics being brought up when you sit down at the table, I'm sure. But of course, everybody in the public has read a lot about the vandalism incident that occurred at, at this project. This being election season, I did read on social media that I was responsible for that. I found some entertainment out of that, but at any rate, what, how does, we're, we're very pleased to, to read that, that the individuals responsible for that have, have been arrested. Where does that liability go?
It goes with the general contractor. Obviously, he still has, you know, possession of the property until he turns it over to us. So it goes under the contractor's general liability, or actually, a builder's risk insurance policy. We've met with the contractor and the builder's risk, you know, folks on site already. They've already assessed the damage. And of course, they'll be working that out with the contractor versus.
And I thought that was the case, but I thought it was worth noting for the benefit of the public that that, that is a loss that is not borne by the county or the school system, but is part of the responsibility of the contractor and their insurance.
It is a loss of monies, but not directly to the county from March.
That makes it no better.
Better, no, sir.
It's still terrible, but, yeah.
The contractor's done a very good job of getting back to where he was about a week and a half ago, and has done quite a bit of restoration. And, and most of the damage has been at least put back to where it was.
Right.
A week and a half ago before everything started. We still have some issues with the flooring, having to go back in and grind up some of the flooring area because of the paint and make sure it adheres. Because we got poor man's tarazo, we call it in our part of the world. It's acrylic flooring. They call it poor man's tarazo, it goes and it has to adhere to that, that area where the paint was spilled significantly, so we have to get that cleaned up. Just moving along, we did a good job of responding, and we appreciate that they did that well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we move now to item 4.2, and that is appointments to the Transportation Advisory Committee. And that, that involves the appointment of Commissioner Keiger as the alternate. Commissioner Poole currently serves as our representative on that. I think that this is a result of some typographical error somewhere along the line. Yeah, I think in, in one, one statement, we appointed me, and in the other statement, we appointed Commissioner Keiger. So this just clears this up and makes Commissioner Keiger the official alternate for that Metropolitan Planning Organization Board, or the TAC, Transportation Advisory Committee. So we would, on this item, also like to vote on that tonight so we can get that cleared up. We thought we had done it previously. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules, to take action on this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And are there any other, is there any other discussion or questions about, about this issue? So at this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Keiger as the alternate member to the TAC for a one-year term ending December 31st, 2020. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Item 4.3 are our other appointments to boards and committees, which you all have a list of those with explanation of those situations. Unless there is some question or discussion, we will deal with those on our consent agenda during our regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, while you're on board appointments, we're still looking for somebody that is willing to serve on the Central Line of Economic Development Commission. We thought we had someone, and it didn't meet their schedule. So we're still looking for, and they're, they're requesting somebody from the business community. And that is their Economic Development Board that's representative of all the member, member counties that meet, I believe it's quarterly, at their research campus over on the, at their main offices. And that discusses all of the economic development projects and potential projects throughout the region. If you know of anybody, or if you're able to talk to somebody to see if they are interested, we could make them, make that happen pretty quickly for them if they would, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we'll have somebody step up. When you say at their offices at the research campus, to me, that means Kannapolis, but I don't think that's what you meant.
University Research, over at U N C C.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving to item 4.4, Resolution Amending the Board of Commissioners 2020 Meeting Schedule, which includes the change of venue for our second quarterly summit meeting. I think we have moved that to the Concord Senior Center. Any questions or discussions on that? We'll move to item 4.5. County CVB and our local agreement on the, and that Jonathan Marshall will lead us to that discussion.
And actually, these next two items go together. I'm keeping Mr. Cohn from getting to his next meeting. So I'm gonna discuss both the synthetic turf project and an update and ask him to join me for, for some. and ask him to join me for some updates on that, and then the interlocal agreement goes along with that. As you recall, we're in the process of doing phase one of that, which was basically money on hand from our portion of the occupancy tax. And those projects, if you have questions, again, Brian can update you on those, but those are all underway. Phase two was to do two more synthetic fields at West Cabarrus High on some fields that were already set up for practice fields, but make them synthetic turf. We have met with CVB a number of times to go through the total scope, and those are, that project would be funded. We would actually pre-fund that essentially. Rodney can probably is a better way of putting that, but then pay ourselves back with the occupancy tax revenues we receive over some time. And that's why we need to modify the interlocal agreement. As we have gone through that, we continue to update the pricing. I will have that for you as part of your, when the agenda comes out for your regular meeting, for you to consider, as well as how long we think that will take for us to pay that back. But I wanted to point out that in addition to the fields, obviously, there's some things we've identified, such as fencing, scoreboards, lighting. We talked about a restroom. We talked about some accessibility. There's just a number of things, as well as irrigation with those. So we're working on prices for all of those as part of this phase two to present it essentially turnkey to you. If we find that we don't have enough money over the next ten years of revenues from that occupancy tax, then we will need to eliminate some of those. And so that's why we're working through trying to get the best numbers. In addition, we're building into some contingency this time. As we move the other one forward to fairly quickly to get started in between seasons, there are some things that have come up like field goals or goalposts.
Football goalposts that needed replacement. We had identified after everything had been brought to you the storm control measures that were required as a part of J M Robinson's field, that when that school was built, we did not have those measures in place. It wasn't a requirement. And as we worked through the, what the design was going to take to upgrade our current BMP structures to accommodate the runoff, we were being told that we needed to accommodate for the entire site, which obviously would be exponentially expensive to do. So we identified a treatment method underneath the turf field itself with geosurfaces, used to be medallion. They're going to treat that water underneath the field, but that's just an added expense that was not captured at the phase one of this project.
So Brian has been working on all those pricing, all with contractors that have done previous pricing, do other purchasing groups. So it's essentially a way of quick bidding this, and so we will put together a spreadsheet showing all those pricing along with the recommendations we're making for what goes into those facilities. The one key one, I think, that is a large expense, or two keys, are the bathrooms and the lights. And CVB is very insistent on the lights. If we aren't able to put a bathroom in, at this point, we would work on putting that in in the future. There is a bathroom or restroom facility at the tennis courts, and for those of you that have been able to tour West Cabarrus High, it's not right next to the practice fields, but it is just down through the student parking lot from there.
Correct.
So we'll finalize that pricing for you, get it in your agenda, and make a recommendation to you with that.
Okay, any questions for Brian or Jonathan? Thank you.
And then backing up to the, thank you. Backing up to the interlocal agreement with the CVB, this is an agreement we've had in place, and actually, based on the language, has been going month to month on how they provide some portion of the occupancy tax to the county for administrative purposes and for use and things like this. This would actually extend that term ten, up to ten years, and then it would revert, where we would go back and assess whether or not we need to continue it month to month or actually bring another term to you. Not sure I'll be here in ten years to do that. Someone will bring that to you. But that said, it does extend that. Mr. Cook is reviewing that for language. John Mills with the CVB has already reviewed it, as have I, and so there are some recommended changes in there, and I noticed it was not in revised text format, and I'll make sure you get a revised text format so you can see what we've changed. But the primary thing is renewing it essentially and extending it ten years to cover that period of time we expect to be using these revenues to fund this particular project.
Questions for Jonathan? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we move now to item four point seven from finance, audit contract for fiscal years ending June thirtieth, 2020, 2021, and 2022.
So our current audit contract has expired, and so we sent out a request for proposal for our external audit services. We had two firms that decided not to bid. One was, they had no local presence in the area, so it was going to be a lot of travel for them, so they decided not to bid. We had another one that decided for independent purposes, they didn't want to bid, also because we're going to be using them for some lease work that we're going to be doing. So we was down to two bidders. So we had two different accounting firms, and we had, after a review, we decided that we'd like to go with Martin Starnes Associates. They were not the cheapest one. However, when we looked for their qualifications, the, Martin Starnes has twenty-one counties out of the hundred, and they have, their three partners are all GFOA reviewers for the Certificate of Excellence, and we just think that's valuable. We need that resource for different purposes. For like, for example, we are continually having new pronouncements we have to implement. The latest one is on leases. I spoke earlier about that. We have to go through all of our, a lot of our different account numbers, trying to find leases. And sometimes it might be an embedded lease that we're not even aware of, and we have to report these in different ways, emphasize them over the life of the lease, and even look and see, is there a possibility we'll extend that lease? So we need that expertise from this other accounting firm. So all that being said, a lot of the accounting firms are getting out of the governmental accounting business, so the pool from different ones that will bid on our services is getting smaller. So we thought that with the expertise of Martin Starnes, we would like to go with them. They have given us the option of three years with two additional years, two one-year options after that. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Susan? Okay, I think you have the next item also.
I do.
North Carolina Educational Lottery Payment Applications.
So each year, I come to you with our two applications, one for Cabarrus County Schools, one for Kannapolis City Schools. And we use our lottery funds to pay debt service for school construction. So this year being the same as in previous years, we're coming to you with two applications that total two point three million dollars. This will cover a portion, again, a portion of our debt service. So for example, I wanted to point out to you, during FY twenty, our school debt service is thirty-nine point four million dollars. So, but the two point three will help. So it does go towards that. We average about two point four million dollars in lottery funds over the past five years. Some years, it depends on if we get five quarters, it's the way it falls, or three, and so we average everything out. It's about two point four. So we were able to, a couple of years ago, allocate money for different projects that when we have some excess money, because if we're getting any more, and over time, it builds up, plus interest. So we were able to do a little bit of construction. In this past year, in FY nineteen, we were able to allocate five hundred thousand towards the West Cabarrus High School and reduce the amount of our debt for that school. So we're continually looking at this fund, and I'm thinking that by June thirtieth, we might be able to come back with you with, you know, additional funding money that we can use for one-time projects. This is our fourteenth year of receiving lottery funds, so happy to have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move to item four point nine from human resources, changes to drug-free workplace policy. We're happy to have Lundie Covington to talk with us about that.
Good evening, Commissioners, and I do have two guests with me on this particular topic from Department of Transportation. So we've come before you, it seems like about once a year to revise this policy, and it generally is driven by recommendations from a DOT audit. So that's why Anthony and Bob are here. Bob and company participated in this year's audit. So if there are any questions about that, he could speak to that as well. So what we are trying to do is make this as simple as possible. We have a current policy that has information about DOT testing. Based on the feedback from the audit, they would very much like us to have a standalone policy that is different for transportation. The requirements are very different. We've tried to embed this in our policy, and rather than going back and tampering and tinkering with that main policy every year, what we're proposing to do at this point is have a base policy and then have two appendices. The first appendix would be regarding Department of Transportation regulations for non-transportation employees. We do have a small number of employees that applies to. They're basically in infrastructure and asset management, driving vehicles. Their requirements are not the same. So we'd like to have appendix A that is specific to that group, and then add a new appendix B, which is the sample policy, the model policy we've been provided by the Department of Transportation. It has been updated slightly to customize it for our department. Basically, a lot of that is inserting our county name and our contacts, so that's the basis of the changes. There are a few other items that I'll kind of note. As we go through this policy every year, we like to take advantage of any opportunity to clean up other language. So there were some very small formatting-type changes, but we also have a new safety officer in John Bradley, and he and Kyle Billford reviewed the policy with us. So a substantive change is changing the timeline on accidents from a two-hour, from a three-hour window, rather, for an accident testing to a two-hour, noting, though, that sometimes accidents happen out of our area, and it might take a while to get back. There would be some continuing flexibility where that's required. So that's just basically shortening that time window, but again, trying to add a little flexibility, if necessary, for them to give permission for an extension. The other major change was to basically delete an addendum we brought in in January of 2018. Again, this was related to Department of Transportation requirements, so we had a standalone update we provided at that point in time. The policy now incorporates the language from that, and we would propose taking that addendum away. The other item, again, was tying it to the Transportation Department and their employees, so we've named a Transportation Drug and Alcohol Program Coordinator, who is actually the Transportation Operations and Training Supervisor, Jessica Hilli. So those are the changes we're proposing at this point. We're hoping by going in this direction, it will better satisfy the Department of Transportation as they come in and do these audits periodically, but it will also make it simpler for us in not having to retrain all of our employees. We can just focus on the group that has the changes. So am I leaving anything out, gentlemen, you would like to add? And we've provided for you the summary of changes as well as two tracked documents. So the first document would be our transportation policy with appendix A as it currently exists. The second document would be the new proposed appendix B, and within those documents, you will see highlighting, tracking. So if there are any questions, I know it's a lot to go through between now and the regular meeting. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to address those as they may come up.
Questions for these folks? I hate for Bob and Anthony to come and sit through the whole meeting and not, not, somebody ask a difficult question.
It was educational.
I will say, serving on the Transportation Advisory Board, we've heard a lot of discussion about the randomness and changeability of the audits that occur, so they have some pretty big challenges to meet without a whole lot of rhyme and reason, it seems to me, many times. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then we move to the next item from Lundie, health insurance renewal.
All righty. So this is a topic that we did present at the retreat a couple of weeks ago. The reason is before you now. It's basically just a timing issue. The budget for our health plan is a part of our normal budget process and vote, but because of timing with our open enrollment for the last few years, we've been bringing this to you as a separate item, just because we want to make sure you are supportive and in agreement with the recommendation in any proposed plan changes. Again, we're going to be doing our benefits open enrollment for staff starting on April twentieth, and that will be well before we get to the budget vote. So there is a one-page refresher of what we are proposing to do for this coming year. We are with Cigna now. We would propose continuing on with Cigna. We talked briefly about adding a waste slash weight incentive, and the goal there is to keep improving wellness of our employees and hoping to drive some changes with our health overall. We proposed taking our HSA payments right now. It's once a year in July, so the full amount is paid to any employee who's with us as of July one or the date of the banking that that transmits. So we're proposing to do that in two payments, which will hopefully save a little bit. With the plan design documents, Joanna went through that fairly, a pretty extensive level at the retreat, so at this point, we're not proposing any plan design changes. We are competitive from what we see with an external review. Would like to remain competitive for recruitment and retention purposes. You can see that over time, we are driving more employees into the HSA plan based on the requirement that any new employee after July seventeen will go on HSA. So we're about seventy-thirty right now. We are proposing we keep the dependent premiums the same. Dependent premiums are basically paid one hundred percent by our employees. We do not subsidize those. Some of the counties and other city jurisdictions we looked at do provide a dependent incentive or they assist with that. We definitely would not recommend going in that direction, but would like to at least maintain the current premium structure. And the bad news, unfortunately, is the cost is estimated to go up at a pretty substantial rate, and that was tied to our claims experience. So we have not had a stellar year, unfortunately, with claims, and that's what's driving that increased amount. So if there's any questions about either the plan changes or about the financial portion, we can attempt to answer those, but the goal would be to at least have the plan itself approved so we can move forward with open enrollment.
Any questions for Lundie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the approval of our regular meeting agenda, which you all have before you. I do not think we've taken any action that changes that today.
Oh, did you have to consent? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, yeah, so the insurance item, do you want to cut them consent or new business?
I assumed it would be on consent.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's where it is now, correct?
That was an extra one. It was added. That particular item was added.
Yeah, so that will be.
What's the health insurance renewal I see on there?
That will be F thirteen?
What's eleven? Yeah, number eleven.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, F eleven. Okay, with no changes. I think we have a motion on the floor to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented. Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A three and four. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session, and thank you, television audience, for joining us tonight.